We are now live, we're recording, sir.
Okay.
All right, let's uh...
Thank you.
Bring this week uh... So I don't, I don't, you can dub in the pledge allegiance.
We didn't have it on.
That's okay, we got the main meeting. Okay. Um, let's call the CPC to order at uh... About ten eleven, I mean six eleven. Oh my gosh. Six eleven PM.
Yeah.
Okay. We don't have, I don't have, I ran out of ink, so I, I don't have any... Does anybody have an agenda? We have any agendas? Karen?
No, I didn't see them.
Uh, not that, it's, no, I don't. It's not that difficult, I do, there's three main items on the...
Let me read this for us.
Oh, they're still doing the COVID?
Yeah.
Uh, I gotta read this because they're still doing the COVID thing. Due to the increasing concerns surrounding COVID-19 pandemic, this meeting will be held remotely with no physical meeting location, but that's untrue because you do have the option to come in person. Uh, those seeking to provide public input should also do, using the methods below. Video and audio of the meeting will be aired on Comcast Local TV. At a later date, a live recording of the meeting will be available on the Titan, Town of Titan YouTube channel, which can be accessed using www.youtube.com/townofdighton. Uh, basically, you know, and it's your option to wear a mask, from what I understand. Okay. Oh, good. Thank you. Okay, so, we do have an agenda, what I'll do is I could pass it around to...
That's like a new one, right?
I could, it sounds ironic, but it ran out of ink. And we're in the process of... Okay, uh, do we have any minutes, Karen, from last time?
No.
Not a, so we'll do it at the next meeting?
Oh.
Oh, you do have, you have copies of them?
Okay.
I didn't know yet. All right, so, take a moment, uh, the body, just take a moment and uh...
We can approve those, definitely.
Oh, that's right, that's true.
Uh, beforehand, I already voted Karen of an error. Uh, I would say for that vote, I did not leave until after the vote.
That's right.
And I voted to deny, which meant that the vote was five to three.
So there's an error in that?
Yes, which you could still vote on and with corrections to be made.
Very good. I, I do remember you, I remember you voted, so I think, yeah. Okay, thank you. Um, we don't have any old business. Under new business, I'd like to start out with the uh, we're just gonna go boom, boom, boom.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to take agenda item number three out of order.
Okay.
Instead of wasting the town clerk's time here tonight.
I had thought of that, but we can, let's vote on... Also, there's a motion made to, in a second, to take number one out of order, and so we don't hold up the town clerk in the historical post. Okay, so Dave?
Take a roll call vote.
I am.
Dave? What is the uh...
We're voting on, we're just taking this out of order.
No, what is this?
Let's read it. Uh, the agenda was vote on park and rec funding for new plan presentation, update historical society, vote on twenty-five thousand employees, final vote on town clerk's project funding, those are the three items. So we, Dave, you put your vote.
Yes. Take out all of them.
Mr. Woods? Tim?
Hi.
Nice call.
Hi.
Go ahead.
Hi.
And I'm an I, so it's unanimous. So basically, what we're doing is, we're gonna uh, let's take the uh... It's all right, let's take the historical first.
No, we, you just voted to... We just voted to do, pretend that item number three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion.
Oh, you wanted to do the town clerk?
I would like to make a motion. To approve the town clerk's project on...
Okay. Motion on the floor?
I'm second.
Second by Mr. Coward to approve the town clerk's project funding?
Is there any discussion?
Any discussion on the motion?
Yes, can, can we talk a little bit about how much funding is required, or?
You can, I actually was gonna ask him if he wanted to speak. Or, go ahead.
No, I'm just uh, I am addressing the uh, the attempt to uh, vote on that so quickly, so the gentleman who wanted to move that along, can you, you, you care to speak to, uh, why you're, why you're doing this?
Yeah, the, um, the town clerk has appeared before us twice with the application for funding. We've taken it under advisement, we reviewed that, and I will make a motion to ask.
And how much is that funding?
How much is it, sir?
Not to exceed fifty thousand.
Did you wanna say anything? Mr. Woods, you, I'm just, I just...
Mark, did you wanna talk about anything quick?
The only, no, I, I think I had, you guys got two applications, one for forty-two thousand, one for eighty thousand, so not to exceed fifty.
And just for the public, uh...
Everything was...
It's the public ones, I'm going with the twenty-four. It's to preserve historical records. And, you know, we've been trying to do that for a few years.
Thank you. And, and to add to that, there's been some, quite a bit of discussion before the CPC, and it's, the merits are there, and uh, and every appearance of a very good job being done and worth the money, so uh, I can understand the uh, what's being asked for, what the expenses are, and the value to the community, so with that, I think we will vote.
Anything else, Mark?
No, thank you.
And I just wanna say, we'll call for the vote. Everything is in order as far as the steps, we went through all the steps, and here we are, so I do understand why we wanna move the vote. So, let's take a roll call vote.
Aye.
Mr. Marvel? Mr. Marvel?
Aye.
Mr. Woods, Mr. Ryan, start.
Aye.
Mr. Woods? David?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Anderson and I'm an I, so it's unanimous. It's a unanimous vote, so that carries.
Thank you, Mark.
Thanks, Mr. Woods.
Uh, okay. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make another motion to take agenda item two out of order, update on the historical society, and vote on the twenty-five thousand dollar invoice.
Same.
And if you hear anything else, Mr. Woods, you can ask to offer.
Thank you.
Can I make one correction, it's a commission, not a society?
Commission. You stand corrected.
Society says here...
Yeah, but it announces...
It's the commission.
They're not a commission.
It's the commission.
The society is the weirdest. Okay, motion on the floor, made and seconded by Mr. Woods, and seconded by Mr. Ryan, and that, we take this thing out of order, this next item, and also, any little discussion or any permanent discussion needs to happen. Mr. Marvel?
Aye.
Mr. Ryan's?
No discussion from the board?
I just said we're gonna, I thought we were gonna...
We're, we're making a motion to take this out of order, so that's...
Okay, yeah. Sure, Mark.
Aye.
Adele?
Aye.
Uh, Mr....
Aye.
Mr. Rosen?
Aye.
Digits? Rickerson?
Aye.
And myself is an I, so it's unanimous to take it out of order. So do you have anything for us, do you have any thoughts?
Um, I brought some...
We know it's twenty-five to continue it, so. And you've been through all the steps.
We've been through all the steps. You're all set with the invoice, first of all?
I'll take another copy of it, just for the...
Has it been submitted, and?
No, it has not, but it will be.
All right, yeah.
Because I think there was a misunderstanding the last time we took it under advisement.
The invoice should be big, 'cause that's her...
Well, we'll get on, we'll take that down. And the other thing is, uh, Mr. Pacheco actually thought it was voted on, which it was, but it was just a misunderstanding, because it was just taken under advisement.
Right, because that added permission, then uh, we, Mr. Phil, came forward and said it was approved, as in he told us.
But that's fine, it was just a...
It's fine, I'm here.
Misunderstanding.
So I brought copies, I don't know if you want to take a look at them, these are copies of the work, that's, but none...
I'll pass them on.
This graph of a couple of the buildings. This is what all of the four meetings will, this is what you're paying for, basically, on ninety-four authorities.
And we understand the reasoning was the state put you down on the list, so we're gonna continue.
Yeah, this is what's going on this year for FY twenty-two, so when we're done in June of twenty-two, you will have ninety-four meetings that will be available online, hard copy, probably at town hall and perhaps the library. Also, there'll be a hard copying map, and there'll be an overlay on the, the WGAIS mapping. So for FY twenty-three, which we're asking for now, is the twenty-five thousand dollars to continue our update focusing on North Dayton and the Mount Hope area.
Correct, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
You got questions?
No questions, you're doing a great job, and we are probably gonna...
And if you wanna give me back mine?
You want it back?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, you want it back, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just...
Yeah, we'll give it back.
I just brought it for you, look at it.
Twenty-five thousand, okay.
So here's, that's what you get.
Which is, I didn't realize this, uh, MacRae's wanted so much information.
Yes. Yeah, there, it's really grown a lot, it's um... The criteria is a lot more than when Elaine Barley was doing it, and when they first started in the seventies and eighties, I mean, you could just go and, you know, fill out the form, you didn't have to give your documents, but as you can see, all of this has to be documented, footnoted, the, looking at the map, pictures, um, some genealogy of the families that were there, some deed research goes into it, so there's a lot of work. And it's really, really good, I was impressed. I was jealous too, so, 'cause I didn't like to be able to do that much.
You're doing a fine job, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I'd ask you, uh, Dave, can I put you in the public input for your financial, because I thought you were supposed to put you on the agenda. So let's go, uh... It's all right, and I'd like to do a financial report.
I'm gonna be leaving pretty soon.
Oh, that's... Oh, you wanna vote on that other thing?
Can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
Are you voting again to approve this?
Oh, did we vote to approve? No, we did not, sorry. Thank you, you should stay with me. Somebody's...
I don't know.
All right, Mr. Marvel?
Aye.
Mr. Woods?
Aye.
Mr. Ryan's?
Aye.
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 You can have your money now, Pat.
I'm good to go.
Thank you, dear.
Good to go.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. And if you need anything for town meeting, just let me know.
We probably will ask you to come.
Okay.
Yeah, if you get bored, we're gonna...
Tell me when I can...
If I get bored, I'm out of your cable?
Yeah. Have a good one. Take care.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, let's uh, go to the uh, well, we should go to, I think they won't got the money, but...
Why don't we wrap all that up?
Let's wrap that up at the end, you're reading my mind. Um, let's go for the, the meat of the matter tonight, it's a big uh... Big item, that we gotta get this going, this other gentleman is the chairman. We're gonna take uh, Mark, do you have anything to say on this, we're gonna vote on the parking lot?
No, no, I have one here to say.
No, no.
What? Um, I'm sorry, chairman?
There's been an error in the procedure for item number one. Okay? There's been an error. We're not here to vote on the, not tonight. We're not here to vote on the funding tonight.
You're saying a misunderstanding?
Yeah.
You, you... Based on?
Based on, this is the new project, all right, we voted the last project down. Okay, so this is a new application for funding.
In regards to that paperwork that comes down from the state?
And we got, so this paperwork that Mr. Smith provided us with all ten copies, and we thank him, for bringing us all ten copies.
And we all do, yeah.
But this is considered a new application, according to that.
Or is it a revised application?
Well, no, you know, it, it's, it's an old plan.
But wait a minute, I got something to say about that too.
It's a whole new plan?
No. I understand where you're coming from. I, I can, I, I clearly understand where you're coming from. But in that uh, stuff that came from the commission that I just got put in my hands a few, not too many days ago, there is a section that says we can move this thing forward without waiting. Oh, yeah, I think, sorry, oh.
May I, just, just...
No, I'll let, I'm gonna let Tim speak, because he's the former chairman, he has a lot of knowledge about that. Disrespecting you or anything, Chris.
All right, unfortunately, yes, there was an error, the paperwork for the... What it states, it's on the internet, I gave it to the chairman, it should be getting put up, there is other documents to go on, it's, once you come in to have an application for eligibility, it's always taken under advisement for a month. What happens after that is the applicant will come back in, present the information back to us, and then, on the next phase of...
Somebody on?
Application for eligibility, I'm sorry, for funding, once you've done the application for eligibility, you come in, you take it under advisement, applicant comes back in, we review it, and then if the committee decides to go forward with the application for funding, that's when the committee decides that the funding application is out to the applicant. Now, under the, all, under the rules, it does state that you can do this at an annual town meeting or a special town meeting, okay? And this is just my opinion, due to the circumstances going on now, we would not be able to make the annual town meeting, but we'll, we'll be able to make the, well, special town meeting, okay? That's the route, I think, that the committee, my suggestion, would be best served, as well as the community, because, again, just by my opinion, these people waited fifteen years, I worked on this diligently, it got snowballed, and was harpooned, okay? This would've been done two years ago, but due to circumstances, it was not. So unfortunately, due to errors, just my opinion, I, I have, I've worked at this extensively, Kevin, you've done great work on this, I liked the presentation, I'm glad it's in on my hands, I commend you and your board members for putting this together. And also with the documents, it does state, if you go into the other group of documents, that we made amendments to the paperwork that stated that anybody committee that makes a presentation for application for eligibility must have those meeting minutes voted on by that board committee presented to this committee. And then, secondly, the other part of the, the other addendum that went on, I believe it was in twenty eighteen, was that the committee decided that, because people were coming in at the last second, that the application process would only run from June thirtieth, I'm sorry, excuse me, June first until November thirtieth, of any fiscal year, that way they gives the, this committee the opportunity to review applications, get the applicants to come back in and get their information back to us, and then we can make a informed decision if we wanna go forward with the project. So, I think that those documents, you can get out there on the website as soon as possible. If there was anything that happened with that, I'll take the part of the punishment, I worked basically as a situation of being alone all those years, okay? With no help from anyone, and trying to get projects done, and there were many projects to get done in this town. Due to that, what happened at that time, okay? I'm not considering naming those or any way shape or form, that's just my opinion in regards to the procedures of this. So again, I believe that we will be able to, if we're to vote tonight, to move forward and go right to the special town meeting.
Can I ask a few questions? Sure. And not to create waves with the process, but just as somebody that's new to the process, um, it seems to be, so the information that's available to myself, you know, as an elected official or to the public, our guidelines for CPC funding are not clearly stated, so it's a little bit confusing, um, which I, I understand.
Those are the provisions that they have.
Right, but those documents are not up to the...
They're not comparable, we're not available for us to see.
So it is a little bit confusing, and I did do a little research through, you know, the coal, the Community Preservation Coalition dot org, and so take for instance, the town of Concord has special provisions within their bylaws, and this is something that you guys might wanna consider, and it seems like kind of the operating rules are loosely based right now with the information that's available. So say for instance, for the town of Concord, um, failure to secure CPC funding will create high likelihood that the project will not be able to be carried out for the benefit of the town, because the opportunity is very short in duration. Approbation of CPC funding will contribute materially to the likelihood of success for the project, so we have two right here. The project holds a high priority comprehensive long-range plan, or open space plan, historic resource master plan, or other planning documents. So just, for instance, this project is a part of our open space plan, which has been approved, is to increase accessibility throughout the town. Um, and much like the, the formerly proposed playground from a couple of years ago, I, I really, we've kind of gone into this process with this emphasis that we just need to bring the North Dayton playground back. We all know that my platform has always been accessibility, that's like my main focal point. And it just, I'm, so, we're so focused on, oh, it's just bringing it to a playing, bringing it to not playing. In the current situation that we have in town, we have three established playgrounds in town, we don't have a single accessible surface, we have two accessible pieces, one being the wheelchair swing, which has, you know, pavements, you can access it, and the other is an ADA swing seat, which is set in, um, some pieces, so it's, we're, we're, we're pretty far behind, um, in terms of accessibility. This is gonna, this is gonna make just a massive improvement, um, for our, our community, to have a playground that literally everyone will participate on. Um, I do understand and I respect the process, but I would, I would ask that you all possibly consider the fact that this does have an impact, because if we're waiting to get, so my, all my quotes that are included in my proposal are good for ninety days, we can ask the playground designers to, you know, secure it a little bit longer, but we know that the cost of materials, the cost of fuel, all these things are going up, so it's like, it's already an expensive project. Um, if we wait until it gets to November, th- those costs are gonna go up, and it's just gonna take longer, and now we've gone, essentially, because of the planning process, because of doing the winters, we've carried on a whole additional year to get this, um, constructed. And that's a major concern of mine. I, that this is my, I think this is such an important project to the entire town, not to just North Dayton, that if we could find a way to, um, work together to get this on the June warrant article, that the people of the town would certainly be appreciative.
It's not gonna make a difference, just my opinion, you have from today, you have the warrants closing, April twenty-sixth, you've got a month from today.
Well, this is what I'm gonna ask, okay?
April eleven.
Yeah.
So you got...
Well, can I just ask you one more question in regards to that? Can we? Can we essentially, if you guys take it under advisement with application for funding, I know application for funding essentially goes in, so we'll, we'll, um, we'll, your next meeting will be after warrant articles close. And this is public meeting, this is, you know, public record. Can we establish the warrant article and give you guys the time to go through the process, because essentially we have till June? If we get to town meeting and the whole, and the committee chooses not to approve it upon this project, then we simply won't motion that the town carries that warrant. I think that would be the best approach and a win-win for everybody, um, in this situation. 'Cause I'm perfectly okay with if you guys don't wanna move forward, because we do, you do have a few months until town meeting, that I just simply won't stand up and mo, and ask the moderator to ask the town to vote on.
I'd like to say something, are you finished?
The moderator can't spend his money.
Mr.... Well, I know, it's the taxpayer, well, that's the thing, it's a, it's a, it's a project.
Is the chairman in control of the committee?
I'm trying. Mr. Digits?
All right, uh, this project has gone through the process of review and its worthiness, and all of that has been accepted. The only reason it was voted down at the previous meeting was due to the location of the playground itself in the front, where most, many of us that, uh, voted negatively thought that it was in danger, whereas in the back, there's plenty of space. I don't see any reason, uh, why, we just cannot accept, here and now, all the previous work that had been done on this project, and say, we approve of all the work that's been done, and then, and vote on the new location.
And I, I wanna, I wanna say something to that, are you finished?
Yes, I would stick, but make, make it quick, because...
All right, I know, it's hard, because you're on, everyone's on ten thousand committees.
Okay.
I wanna say something quick, just, I, I, so gave this a lot of thought. And I thought, you know what, I, I supported this thing from day one. I think that there's a special, I should've, maybe I should've called the lawyer of the day, if the ethics, I don't know what to, you know what I mean? We don't have an attorney like the planning board. But, let's put it this way, I supported this from day one, I wanted to go through, I wanna move it along fast, I'm not gonna make, I'm gonna, probably some people won't be happy with me, but I, I really wanna move this thing along tonight.
Okay, I will make a motion to accept all the previous, uh, work submitted as approved.
Sir, a second?
No. No, 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 make it no by you, but maybe yes by someone else.
No, this is what I'm gonna say.
Go ahead.
No, yeah, but this is open for a second, I made a motion, it is over for a second.
All right, wait a minute now.
Second? You get a second?
Second, now this is discussion. Now we're gonna have a discussion.
Discussion.
Discussion. Do you mind if I talk now?
I don't mind, Mr. Woods, you, I, I appreciate your input.
This is what I would like to say.
Okay. You're, you're open to your opinion.
I said it earlier.
I know.
I would like to make a motion to take this under advisement. Get a placeholder from the Board of Selectmen. Have a meeting next week, I mean, next month, for our application for funding. As long as we have a placeholder in place before April eleventh, then it can make it on the warrant. But I'm not gonna vote on this tonight, we're not gonna vote on any other project, no matter who comes before us, because we're not gonna break our rules for these people, and not do it with everyone else.
But I gotta, because listen, wait, I'm talking. I've known your community since it started, okay? We have not bent our rules for anyone. I know, Mr. Woods, I understand that.
Today.
Well, that's...
We're not gonna start today.
That's your opinion.
Now, I, I will, when this discussion is over, I will make the motion to take this under advisement. And next month, we will have a motion for funding, an application for funding, with a warrant article to go forward for the June meeting.
Now, I have a question. Go ahead. In the, in your discussion. Um, are we guaranteed a placeholder from the town?
Cause we are, I already spoke for it.
Yes.
I already have.
We already talked about it.
I already talked.
I was just not asking for it.
You already talked.
They've already, they've always set aside placeholder for CPC.
Well, we're not done talking about that.
You know, I'm not throwing nobody under the bus.
And no, and I can appreciate the process, and I, I, and the, the flexibility, and that's what I was looking for, I was trying to...
We just can't vote on this.
Which is fine.
Jim, you can go, because we're not voting.
You're all right with that? You're all right with that?
Well, I, that was my biggest concern, I wanna have a placeholder and try to progress it as fast as we can to get it on the warrant.
We're still in discussion.
And I'd just like to, just to throw in a couple notes as far as the plans, just one, it is going out back, um, out back meaning essentially where the volleyball court is. I thought that would be a happy medium for all of us to volleyball, and if anybody is not...
Don't waste your time, I know what you're saying, yeah.
Yeah, boy, that's what you're asking?
Yeah, it's just, it's in shambles, whatever it costs to repair it, it doesn't work, and nobody uses it, and it's nice, it provides a line of sight from the street, but it's not out front, I also, Mr., as Mr. Woods advised, one thing that really stuck with me from the last meeting is, as you can see, it aesthetically looks different, I think it's more fitting to the community, and also to a new piece that's coming, I know that once you get to the application for funding, you'll be looking at the dollar value, I do have what, a very hopeful lead for some grant funding from a local playground organization, so I just want that to be said as part of the overall project.
So can I ask your question? You're all right with going that other way?
I don't have to be all right with this.
Well, I mean, it's your part, you worked on this.
Chairman, if I may, because you gotta, I just have a question.
Tom, you can't bend rules.
I'm not bending rules.
Can I ask you a question? Would this committee be willing, because I know I would be, I would be willing to meet three, four, five times before town meeting to get this project?
Second.
Second.
I would answer.
If everyone else is willing to do the same, I'm willing to do the same, and let's get, let's, if...
What are you gonna say?
I think we can do it. I really do, I, I honestly do, because if, if, if we can meet prior to our usual meeting dates, okay? And have a meeting to, again, accept this application for eligibility, work it over, and come back next month, and then present and vote on, I should say, vote on the application for funding to go forward.
That would answer that question.
And the vice recreation commission, they can get everything all filled out, and back to us, and we can meet again, possibly once or twice, maybe three times before town meeting, so we can get this on board.
Good.
And I'll give you a little time, you can work on this.
I know, I know people who miss you a lot.
Mr. Chair, are you in control of the meeting? I am, I, go ahead, if you want, I have, I wanna recognize somebody else, Mr. Anderson.
Okay, procedurally, we have a motion that's a second.
I know that.
So, I understand this.
We gotta vote on it.
If we defeat that motion, Mr. Woods, you want to vote to approve our eligibility? It's up to...
We're taking under advisement.
Okay, I'll make that motion, I'm gonna make that motion.
You can't. All right, we have to vote on the previous motion before we can clear the floor.
Right, we're still discussing.
Right.
Can I discuss some more?
Yeah.
Hey, uh, Mr. Chair, I, you have given Mr. uh, you have given Mr. Woods and quite a bit of time and a few others, I would like to make a couple, I'd like to engage in the discussion as well.
Go ahead.
All right, so the, uh, A playground for North Dayton has been uh in the works and on the planning board at various stages, I do, for a, a long time. And as Mr. Ryan's uh pointed out himself, he has worked diligently on the, on it in the past. It's been a point of contention between a, a, a number of key players for what I recall as years now. And uh it has always run into one sort of a roadblock or another. And uh to the point that I wonder who some of the people on the committee are representing themselves, a few neighbors, or are they representing the best interests of the children of North Dayton and the greater Dayton community? So, um, uh, we're seeing that played out again this evening, where certain parties are coming up with whatever uh they can identify or, or hook a delay onto. And uh once again, uh, this, this goes on and on and on. And uh when everybody around this table, and maybe a number of people in the audience, are quite familiar with these plans, the discussion, uh, the debate over the location at the, at the site. Uh, so, uh, in my opinion, um, we, we should support this, we should vote for it. Uh, the Parks and Rec Commission folks have uh been very diligent in uh providing plans to meet previous comments and recommendations. I feel that they've done due diligence, and I feel that everyone around the table is quite familiar with the pros and the cons. And uh, and if we, and if in some fashion we are bending the rules a little bit, I mean, who is it to slap our wrist? Uh, it's our community, it's our money, the funds have already been taxed, they're already available. And uh, you know, where's Big Brother that's gonna come in and spank us? It isn't there. So uh, I, so, uh, Mr. Chair, I would like very much for us to support this for the children and families of North Dayton and Dayton generally speaking. And uh this business of coming up with one sort of ridiculous reason to delay or disrupt it or stop it uh really is uh, it, it is, it, it just is horrific at some point. And it's, at the last meeting, we witnessed the same parties doing a horrific, brutal verbal assault on the chairman of the Parks and Rec Commission. And tonight, we seem to be a little more well-mannered, but we're still at the same thing, delay, delay, delay. So I would ask that
I take over to a verbal assault, Mr. Rosa, I take over.
Let him finish.
I'm completing my remarks.
I was just, I, I take over to that statement.
Well, you're welcome to do that, Mr. Ryan, disrupt the danger of vice confrontation.
All right. At least have your honor, I thought we were gonna be, I thought we were gonna play nice. All right.
I'm talking to you perfectly attached.
I understand that.
That's a difference.
You're done throwing your little niggas there?
I have something I'd like to say, and then I'm gonna get back to that.
I've completed my remarks.
To check.
I'd like to say this, I, I'm still in the same, I, I don't think, I'm breaking the rules. I don't think I'm bending the rules, in my opinion. I'm only one person. I believe I do.
Oh, I don't, I don't think.
And I know, but I, this is something I gotta put out there. You guys have a lot of experience, you've been in this for a long time, and I respect that knowledge and everything. But I'm not looking backwards at, at the past. We've gotta move forward, I, I feel we're doing the right thing, and I wanna move it tonight, it probably won't happen, who knows? But that's just my opinion, I'm one person, I'm one person.
You're not listening, no.
But yes, I do hear you, Mr. Woods, but what I'm trying to say is, I just got that material in my hands a few days ago. And it says that we have the leeway to make an exception. I, I don't think that we're gonna, just because we make an exception to move this thing forward faster.
Show me where it said that.
I don't even have it with me.
I didn't think you did.
But I have read it.
Yeah, I read it too, and I read it differently.
Do you have it with you?
No.
Well, there you go. So it's, everyone has a different opinion, I understand that. And I wanna recognize Mr. Erickson, and I'll get to you, go ahead, Dave.
I, I believe that there's, you don't need to use any exceptions, if we just agree as efforts of wisdom. I have a couple of extra meetings.
Okay.
It sounds like there's
A change in.
Movement in the contentious issue of the location.
Can we get out of the discussion phase?
Just one more person in the back there.
Hi, Katie Andrews, I live in the North Dayton community, I grew up there. Um, many of you I've had the privilege of meeting and working with in the past. I just wanna say, I feel like I would love to consider the multiple times that we have brought this before you as a board, the multiple times we've taken it under advisement, multiple times we've approved, and even gotten to the point of a warrant, and just have funding issues. So we have approved this money multiple times in the past. And under, you know, twenty-seven different versions, you know, version six point O, B, C, D, E, and F. Um, I appreciate the work you all do, and I would just love to see this go forward and, and get the work going. I have a, I've been, you know, in some phase of trying to get some momentum on this for at least six years. I have records of that, and I have a childhood is now outgrown playgrounds while we've been waiting for a playground. Thankfully, I still have two more who are still in age, I would love to see them make use of that place. I grew up on that playground using it, these girls grew up on that playground using it. We just love to see a place that's safe for our kids, to me, others, and especially we know what a toll COVID has taken on our children and socialization overall in the community and people and not being together and having a place together is huge. And so whatever you guys can do to make sure that this makes that due meeting would be absolutely appreciated.
Thank you, what was your name again?
My name's Katie, Katie.
Thank you, Katie.
Can I recognize Dave, I kinda left them hanging there, where do you all start?
I agree with uh Dave Erik, Erik's too. Um, I think if we're gonna do multiple meetings, that's the proper way. But we're really making attempt to get it out there so we get it done. I'm all for it, I wanna make sure we're sincere to get this project.
That's what I also would love to. Yes, sir.
Me.
Yes, sir.
Um, Jonathan Gail, twenty-two, Waterford Circle Impact, and I'm also the ATA Coordinator for the Town and Chair of the ATA Commission. And I just, I wanna just express, first of all, you guys have all done a lot of hard work on this, not just this year, but some of you have done a lot of hard work on this for many, many years. And none of that goes underappreciated or under-respected, because we wouldn't be doing this today if you're where we are now if it weren't for the hard work that several of you have done for a long time, you know? People agree, disagree, that's part of the process, we all know that. And that's part of what's going on tonight, in fact, you see that too. Having said that, originally, and I've only been in the town for five years, two over five years. And I think some of you know at first, I first thought way back when was, you know, everything has to be done by town hall, everything has to have this, has to have that. But what I've learned over time is where the need is and where there's the most likely to get things taken care of, you know, for the short term and maybe for the next many years going down the road. And if you look at the North Dayton playground, you look at all of the residents there and the homes that have young kids and so forth. You look at the original thought of having it quote-unquote outback, way outback, which from my perspective would have been inaccessible for a lot of situations to where it would have been, you know, almost at the street, and a lot of people thought it would go back to where this proposal is now. This has come an enormously long way. If you look at the fact that there's gonna potentially be fencing there, if you look at the backstop area that's gonna be done, if you look at lighting that's gonna be done, all this work that Parks and Rec has put into this, whether you vote on this tonight, or as Mr. Woods suggested, is taken under advisement and put on the warrant as, as a placeholder. The bottom line is, that park had, is the one park in the community that not only has the potential to be fully accessible for every resident in the community, and the first playground, I'm gonna say that over and over if I need to, to be fully accessible for all the residents in the community, it has the potential to be the full park that's fully accessible, it's not just the playground. Everything else in there is gonna be new, everything else in there is gonna look vastly different and improved than it does today. And I can even see it when I say that. But I think you understand my point, there's an opportunity for you to set precedent for what your perspective is of what parks provide to the town. And I know that this, this committee has provided a lot of funding for a lot of other projects. This is one that virtually every single member of the community has an opportunity to go to, to enjoy, to sit at, play. So I'm strongly in support of it, I'm strongly in support of the work that the Parks and Rec Commission has done on, on behalf of the community. I just wanted to make that clear.
Excuse me, Mr. Gales, uh, would you care to expand on the term fully accessible? Because some of the public may not appreciate uh the point that you're making.
I think when you look, when you look at a playground or any open space area or any public area, you have to look at how people use it and who can use it. So in this case, for example, there'll be a walkway together, there'll be easy access to a parking lot. So whether you have a child in a wheelchair, an adult in a wheelchair, or a walker, or using cane or using other devices, is first of all gonna be physically easy for them to access, and it's gonna coincide with where accessible parking or disability parking. And I know so if you have handicap placards, you're gonna be able to use those handicap placards apart relatively near the playground yourselves and get there with family members, children, grandchildren, whoever, in my opinion, you're gonna have easy access, they're gonna have easy access to it. If, if somebody came in on their own, if a child came down the street or they're going to a wheelchair, they're gonna have easy access to get themselves. And you look at the equipment, with the equipment, much of the equipment that's gonna be in this playground that, that Kevin has worked so hard on with the, with the commission, is gonna be equipment that anyone can use. So you all talked about safety, and you've talked about road safety and police, police details, who would be around and so forth. Which just as important is the safety of children or anyone with a disability, not only using the equipment, but helping people unplug in the equipment. So all of the equipment that's gonna be there somehow as an accessible component, so that children, regardless of their age and ability, can use it. There are a lot of kids that can't hold bearings on a swing like this, they can't hold the chains. There are a lot of kids that can't go down a slide home, there are a lot of kids that can't get on a playground, excuse me, a merry-go-round the way many of us did when we were kids, and many of them never could. So this is an opportunity for all of those kids to have the same opportunity. It's an opportunity for parents to share and interact with kids who have disability and kids who don't have disability. So what you're doing is you're expanding everyone's understanding of what it means to have a disability and what it means to be open-minded and what it means to be accepted. So I don't know how else to explain that, but.
Well, that was great. Excellent, uh, I think we, I think most of the people are aware of that, and I, we appreciate you putting that forth. Um, one more thing I'd just like to say, and uh, this other plan that came in, the second plan, it's much more efficient, it's, they did add a lot of better design and format and everything. And I, it seems like the numbers, it's really not that bad. I mean, I think it's gonna be, you know, we have the funding, um, I still, I see Kevin possibly as the chairman of Park and Rec is, is kinda easing up on the, I was under the impression we wanted to push it through uh right away tonight, maybe I misread it.
Well, I just wanna make sure that we have the placement.
Well, that's what I asked, Dave, Dave's telling me they have it, I
Tom, remind if I talk, yeah, you gotta interrupt me.
I'm not gonna interrupt you, but you don't, you don't have to point, Mr. Woods, don't point that finger, it's got a nail in it.
Yeah.
So basically, I, you know, and also, well, I'm gonna, I will, just let me finish. I mean, I understand where you're coming from.
Thank you.
But that finger with the nail, you know what I'm talking about, that's what my grandma used to say, don't point that finger, it's got a nail on it. So here's the thing I wanna say, yeah. Um, I have a grandchild who has spinal bifida. So I also have, uh, in my heart, a feeling for this, not just for the money, we have the money, we have the money, it's not about the money. We're very fortunate to have all this money coming into this town, even with COVID on this CPC for, uh, formula. So it's not the money, we got the money. We were just trying to work out a few things. They had, we had some folks get together, they worked it out, they did a tremendous job on their own time. And even hand-delivered the stuff, and it all, it looks, it's excellent. So if we can, we'll finish this discussion up and we'll vote, and then we'll move on. You wanna speak now in this?
You gotta let me?
I will let you, but you just
Don't make me, I'll, I figure out you again.
Well, we're trying, I'm trying to lower the temperature a little bit.
Do I, do I have to stop this?
Yeah, does she have to, you know, go ahead.
Your turn.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I would like the public to understand, and maybe some of our CPC members understand. We are not gonna push anything through, okay? We have to follow procedure and protocol, okay? The CPC is a program that was designed by the state, we have regulations and rules that we need to follow. And, and, and I hope everybody can understand that. We're not pushing anything through for anyone ever. I've been on the CPC since it started, okay? It actually started in my living room with myself and Ellen Bidlack. We have nine hundred and six thousand dollars in the kitty now. I've been involved since day one. I met my wife at that playground in nineteen seventy-two, okay? So if you think the playground means a lot to you, well, it means a lot to me too. But there are procedures and protocols that we need to follow, and that's the way government works. I'm sorry if anyone thinks otherwise, okay? We discussed this a half hour ago, that we were just gonna make a simple motion after this discussion is over. Whenever it's over, I will make a motion to take this under advisement. Some of our members only got this when this meeting started today, okay? So in all fairness, and to the rules and regulations that we need to follow, we're gonna take it under advisement. We want this to go forward, okay? You read that here tonight from just about everybody, right?
We definitely want it.
We definitely want this to go forward, okay? But we are not the deciding factors, we only decide if it's gonna be funded or not gonna be funded. The taxpayers who show up at the special town meeting that we'll have this one, or the annual town meeting, will decide whether or not we spend the money. And we don't decide, we only say, yes, we'll fund it, but it's the taxpayers who spend the money. We don't spend the money, we just manage the money. And we are not gonna mismanage anything, because we have people coming before us all the time. And we've completed some very, very good projects in this town. And if you want, I could list them all, but we don't wanna be here all night. We have paid for a lot of things for a lot of people in this town, and they all followed the same procedure. So we're not trying to shaft anybody, you know, it's, it's been a work in progress, like Tim said earlier. And we don't wanna back up to that, but the playground would have been there a couple of years ago if somebody didn't throw a monkey wrench in there. So, you know, there were some monkey wrenches thrown around here too, and, you know, left the way the cookie crumbles. Okay, so let's end the discussion, Tom, if that's okay with you.
Wow, are you done?
I'm done.
Mr. Ryan?
Um, I would just like to respectfully ask of the applicants, since um we have recovered money for fences in the light and Kevin, um, is the intent to complete the fence of the playground, the ball field itself, to the light and throw it back, or?
So we actually, we just, it just got launched this week, the invitation forbid to address the baseball field fencing, and part of the consideration is moving right field to make the pathway. Um, there is some, and this might be a question for, for you guys, is in my proposal, I do have some money for additional fencing to shield the basketball court from that? I don't know of the previous funding, because it pertains to fencing on the property.
That, that wouldn't matter, um, so, like, who I use was high on the fence on the Far River, so if you can't judge it gentlemanly, maybe you'll update your, your ball field, because again, you only have to use the one person who's on the state bill list.
Right.
Ever got situations like that. Mr. Paul St. George is the town's electrician, and I went through him to get the numbers that we have for the income. So if you can contact both of these and have that information ready with your package for funding, and we can just, we can just add that and just go right to town meeting and ask for those extra funds to complete the rest of the fencing.
Listen, uh, I think that was already voted, I
If the law were comprehensive, it wasn't like, it's not gonna be enough now, because the bid that was given at that time is probably gonna exceed what it is now for fencing and to install.
Right.
So same thing with Mr. St. George and the light and his project.
So we're, we're actually, we, we have a pre-bid meeting, just
You can ask the contractor.
Yeah, so we can see, but I think what we forecasted, that, that the fencing project was gonna be somewhere in the neighborhood of about thirty thousand. Um, and then I'm still trying to iron out the details of lighting and working with TMLB. So much has changed between, especially, I think that was two thousand nineteen, that that got approved. So so much has evolved, and we, it rebates and, and
We can tweak the number, Kevin, at next month's meeting, or if you know prior to that.
Yep.
Let Tom know.
But I, I don't, actually, as far as, as far as the whole, the presidency of approved funding, I don't foresee us needing additional funding for fencing or lighting, so this project would be standalone.
I'd like to say more, just say
Wait a minute now, hold on.
A lot of the projects that we've had over the past, we've asked them to overfund it a little bit, just in case of they run into problems, because then whatever money's left can go back.
Correct.
Right, so, don't be afraid.
Well, and I know that attitude, and you'll see that with my request, is that I'm projecting for, you know, if you're gonna run into something, I, I expect it.
You're better than that rule.
And everything that we've done over, at least over the past year, of myself being the chairman of Parks and Rec, I have no problem giving money back to the factories, I don't feel like I need to, because everybody that's given.
Just for, um, just for reference, there was um forty-five thousand dollars, and that was high on the fence, what I used for, that was for the backstop and all the fencing, and then the lighting was fifteen thousand dollars, so it was a shame.
Okay, so, and I spoke to Ms. Agiar about contacting Mr. St. George, and I ironed out that. Just trying to work out the details of what those
So if you can tweak those numbers, and we can include that, and just, you know, again, um, so I got to my question. So if your intent is still So if your tent is still doing the backstop and you're all of fence?
Correct. New dugouts, and we're also gonna make some in-kind contributions. Well, we will discuss to make in-kind contributions
That's on your equity.
From Parks and Rec, for new dugout benches cemented in the dugouts to make it, again, more accessible and just bring it kind of up to date, so.
Great, thank you.
And I just wanna say that, you know, we have, sometimes we have to remind ourselves, we are doing the work of the people, and sometimes it drags out a little bit. But let's get it all out, and we have a record of it. It's only about, you know, we started a few minutes late. You know, I, we're all here, you know, and we're trying to do the right thing for the, you gotta remember who it's for, the kids, people, and what, like, I just, I sincerely was trying to push it through fast.
And I think we're all in agreement that
I think we're all in agree, we work together.
Well, we certainly appreciate the, you guys', um,
Well, that was, you understand, that's the impression I was getting.
You know, like Mr. Woods.
But if we can make these accommodations, everybody's happy, everybody's feathers, everything gets padded down nice, everybody gets
Everybody wants to see this.
We all wanna see it go through. We got a guarantee for the place.
Yeah, and our employer, nice and safe.
Absolutely fantastic.
That's, and that's
All right, so is there any more discussion on this thing's been banging around here?
So one more month, the children in the wheelchairs can wait one more month? Is that what we're saying?
Okay, we're gonna expedite the
I will make the motion to take this under advisement.
Is there a second?
No, we're going on the motion.
Yeah, we still got that thing flowing around.
Cause I don't know what the motion was.
The motion was a discussion on moving this thing right away. Moving, it, it, it's, it seemed like, do you have a, Karen, you have?
Yeah, motion made by Mr. Digits and seconded by Dave Moll to accept all documents as presented and approve and move it along to the act for funding applications for funding.
So we can, can we revoke that and go with this vote?
We can vote it out on that, and it's a sense of the committee.
Okay.
If there's something else, then you can vote.
Cause I'm on board, Barbara's having a couple meetings, get this, yeah.
Okay, so you're changing your
I'm, I'm gonna, I made a motion to pass it tonight, just go on that under advisement. We got a placeholder, we're all sincere about this, to get this through. I'm on board.
Can't make a motion to pass it. Okay, you can make a motion to take it under advisement and speak with the town administrator to get a place card. Will be amended to town meeting. That's a good motion, Wendy.
If I can suggest, best thing, Dave, is to amend your original motion.
That's what I was trying to say. I'm sorry. Can you, okay, so, you know, I'm gonna amend my, uh, original motion. Karen, will you read that again?
All right, Mr. Digits, it's that, accept all docs and documents as presented, approve and move it along to the application for funding base. And then that's what we went
Okay, so we wanna, I'm trying to, I'm gonna amend my, my original motion.
Okay.
That we take this under advisement, have some multiple meetings.
Sincere.
Be sincere about it, try to push this forward, get a warrant, just go, try to do it the right way, follow procedure.
Okay, and second? I'll second that. Second by Mr. Ryan. Let's do a roll call fast. I to Marvell, Mr. Woods, Mr. Ryan.
Hi.
I to Del.
I.
To Stuart, Mr. Rosa?
No.
No. Dave?
Hi.
Person, and I'll, I'll go along with it. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, can we look at our calendars to see what available dates everyone has, cause I believe our next, our next scheduled meeting is April fourteenth. Can we, can we all get together and meet prior to the fourteenth of April?
I'm open to
The twenty-first?
Hello.
I'm open to anything.
I'm sorry, yeah, you're right.
The twenty-first.
I'm sorry, twenty-first. I'm open to anything, Tim, on, on meeting.
The only thing we're gonna have a problem is trying to find a place.
Oh, the scheduling, that's the problem.
We got a lack of conference rooms.
No, let's just stick with the twenty-first. We'll have a place card, and it's gonna
May I ask a question?
Go ahead.
Will the place card have, you know, just, let's just call it, uh,
They'll hold us a spot.
Yeah, we don't have to specify a dollar.
No, it just holds a spot in the warrant, right?
Yeah, it'll just, it'll just have
Because the town does not control this money.
Correct.
Only we control it.
The people. Well, I know, we, in the process, we need to specify a specific dollar amount before the closing of warrants. Okay.
We don't, we don't. All right, so we're, we're in agreement with that?
So, all right, so our goal's is April eleventh, right?
Right.
We're gonna meet until the fourteenth. Today is the seventeenth of March, and can we meet successive Thursdays in April, possibly the seventh and the fourteenth, before we meet until the twenty-first?
I, I can't.
And then by the twenty, if we do prior to that, and we have the opportunity to accept, we've already accepted the application for eligibility, taken under advisement, we can be able to come back and vote on the application, go forward with funding, and then get the applicant back in for the twenty-first with the application for funding. Does that work for everyone? Just a suggestion.
In the discussion, I'm fine.
April seventh and fourteenth, and then twenty-first, we take a vote.
So we have to, you know, it'll be
I like the fourteen.
And the seventh.
I understand. I, I know, I'm minimal to anything.
No, I guess
Did we get it done at the meeting, Tim?
No.
I, I think so. I think we can.
We can get it done at the next meeting. I think.
Two months later, the fourteenth, if we do that.
Yeah, but we still have to give the applicant the application for funding.
Now, is that thirty days, Tim? Tim, does that mean?
Okay, yeah, all right. We'll go the seventh, and we'll give you an application for funding.
On the seventh.
Yeah, and then the fourteenth, we'll do the funding.
May I just ask that as when the placeholder gets approved? Well, not if we just can, can you just provide me with documentation that the placeholder has been?
Yeah, we'll have to fly it.
The chair can send out.
Yeah, you'll have the same way of getting to know that.
The placeholder thing is kind of the thing, you know what I mean?
Okay, there you go.
Just let me call first.
If we recall, we can't usually, it's not so many times. Yeah, you know, we're Let's play something.
Call, uh, who's that partner?
What's that thing called? Pasi, good.
Yeah.
All right. So where are we, folks? We got Karen, you got this all down, the dates and all such.
So you're gonna meet again on April seventh?
Okay.
Six o'clock here?
Well, that's the problem, I'm not sure, apologize.
Is it?
Not gonna make it up to you.
Is it the seventh, and it's gonna be six o'clock here?
The seventh, she said the seventh.
And we usually, there might be a problem with the build.
Well, I know other people got this reservation, so I
We're gonna have to see.
So you have the schedule, more or less. Maybe you can help us figure out where
Well, we'll find out soon, all time, always, being like
That's a good point, that's a good point.
Should we check with Leanne?
Yeah.
Leanne will be our person to check with.
Could have any of your house.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll, we'll be able to have it somewhere, even if
So we definitely the seventh.
I wanna say I do wanna make this point, I guess it's, it's all down to boards and committees, it's the chairman's decision, if you still wanna go the Zoom route, you can, you don't have to do that anymore, if it's not required, and
You just have to hold the meeting.
You have to hold the meeting for a while, and then you can meet in person.
Yeah, I like the Zoom.
It's up to whomever, if they wanna wear a mask or whatever, that's up to them.
I like the Zoom because it does let more people come into the meeting, even if they can't make it. I just kinda like the Zoom. Even, even so, we don't need it, I don't know.
That's up to the committee.
You don't think you need the Zoom?
No. So next meeting, though.
How many people you got on the Zoom tonight?
Uh, you got one, two, three, four people out there?
Yeah, at least four people.
Guys, what you could, what you could also do is that, you'd have to have a tax that
Four people.
The link wasn't, the link was not posted, so there were many residents asking for it. It wasn't available.
Yeah, can I
There were, there were
Just to, to, the, the committee's, um, information, when you're posting agendas, please do it in a Word document, a PDF. One, it's not accessible at all, and two, you lose the hyperlink for Zoom, and it's like a nightmare for, most people like to just click on it now.
It was a link like this long, and you would have had to copy each letter.
Who posted that?
Tom Borkland.
It was
I did, I posted it. No, no, I did?
No, well, that happened, that was just
No, that wasn't me that came through, that comes through the town, through Leanne?
The town, the town posted it, but it wasn't clickable.
The format that you sent in was a scanned PDF.
Oh.
Makes it difficult to transfer it into
Oh, and then I did, I did.
It changes into what's called an image document.
Okay, where we at?
All right, so that's neither here nor there at this point.
Where we at?
Where are we, Karen?
Uh, I know we're gonna have a meeting on April seventh, which is discussed, and if you're gonna use the Zoom, I prefer
No Zoom, no Zoom? You like Zoom because sometimes you can't get on. Well, you're a secretary.
Are involved in the town?
What's that?
I would think the goal is that the
Have people involved, yeah.
Possible are involved and informed, and, I mean, let's be honest, especially for this project, parents, I've got my husband watching three children right now so that I can come to this, so, for the, a lot of people who would benefit from that.
What happened?
The only, excuse me, the only reason why I say this is because we've had planning board meetings, we've had people on the phone from California, from Tennessee, from Florida, from Canada, they could not hear any information that we're providing at the planning board meeting. It happened yesterday in the storm on the community, where people on the phone get from Kansas City, Florida. It just continues to happen, it just breaks up, it depends on where you are, you know, when you're running the zone, just, it just
Whether or not they participate, I mean, just being able to access it.
I think Leanne had mentioned that the selectmen like to do it because it brings more people of the town access. I'm, I'm trying to be as transparent as I can, but yeah, maybe I did mess that up. I didn't know that, but I couldn't get to the town hall, so I sent it scandally, Anne.
No, that's
But I, I guess I didn't realize, but I have to start checking with the technical
Mr. Chairman, as a point of information, just so that the committee is aware, the state has still approved of the hybrid version of all meetings through this June.
They still have it on the page, yeah, so. I'd like to keep it Zoom.
Zoom away.
So let's Zoom, let's Zoom up. We'll figure it out, Dave, somehow. You know, what can I say? Okay, you say nay, I say yay.
So, just for clarification, Mr. Chairman, this meeting will be April seventh and six P M.
Correct.
Location to be determined.
We'll have to figure it out.
I'm, I think, Tim, what I'll do, I'll call Leanne, see what we got going, and then see, get those dates. We have a lot of people involved, we're gonna have to work around them, you know, because we gotta get this done. I agree with you guys, so.
And we've been in that boat before. We couldn't even have meetings, because we didn't have a building, we didn't have a camera.
We can, we have this building, at least it helps, you know, so.
All right.
So, if, if this committee can meet, I'm throwing this out there, right now, the commission on disability is scheduled for this location that same day at four thirty. If this committee can meet earlier, like at five or five fifteen, because we have it until six. So we can change our date.
On the seventh?
On the seventh, yes.
Well, we're gonna do that at six, so.
Right, but I mean, what I'm saying is, we have it from four thirty to six. If, if there's a, I don't know but we, like in five or five fifteen, we, because of the advance notice, could change our meeting date, and basically, let you have the space.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to, uh
It's good to know. Where are we now?
Marry the meeting to six thirty, and then we know they're out of here? That, no?
Or what? Doesn't matter. But we're not, we're never, we're not that long anyway.
Well, okay. There wasn't space available. All right, so we'll work together, and we'll just figure it out, yes, thank you, thank you.
Or even part of our time, so if you need us to finish
I'd say you keep the six.
Fifteen or something like that. We'll do it.
Thank you, though, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, so any more discussion on that?
We're all set. You did a lot of writing today, huh?
Okay, so, we have to, I wish, I forgot what we were asking. Do we have to vote on anything, Dave? Let's see, can you give me your financial? That's all set, so, all right. All right, let's go, I'm gonna have to, and we're gonna open up the, public input, but I want Dave Patterson, our finance officer, to give us a, folks, can you just, it's been fairly good, though, thank you. Mr. Harrison, you on the floor?
Yes, the financial report, you give me two pieces of paper, and you need to creatively stick them together like Mr. Borkland.
Okay.
Why issue, preferred by accountant. Finally, our kind of accountant is working on this with me. There are no updates, the only difference from last month is you can read this one. Last month, we needed a microscope to read, and if you look, you wanna know how much money we have in the
Thanks for coming up, guys.
Wanna know the dollar amount of money, we're already in the far way, you know, one million.
Well, we get one million dollars.
No, we don't, we don't have one million.
We're almost to a million.
But we already decided to subtract some of that. The amount that you have to subtract from that is one thirty-six, two eighty-one for Lincoln Woods. Fifty thousand for the boat ramp, twenty-five thousand for the check that we're about to write for preservation. And finally, we subtract from that sixty-two thousand five hundred for the playground project, which what we just heard is that probably this year, then found out they hope it won't hold up. So if you subtract those four amounts, then we'll have what we really have to spend, which is, you know, still in seven hundred, around seven hundred, so it's healthy balance. And we need to be, in my opinion, need to be thinking about what we can do. Thank you. Drive through some errors in this, and I am working with her. She says she can pretty much give me an update once I'm through, so that's pretty much, that'll be, you know, maybe.
And I mean, I think she's learned that too. You go into that office, and they're like, when you say CPC, they're like, oh my God, you know, they don't even
Any updated all about the negotiations on Pleasant Street?
I have not heard anything.
And we need to reach
Or reach out.
The county ministry, let's see what the situation is.
You just missed it.
Are you sure if Mrs. Goulat was aware of that, or I figured if Mrs. Harris, the former county's industry, so.
Did you get that, Karen? We're gonna find out. Did you get that? Not what he did. Nothing, I didn't see it.
Yeah, you know what's a good thing is, this report goes up on YouTube, so you can watch that and take notes, you know? Hey, Sher, I know there's a lot going on tonight.
Yeah, we'll reach out. I appreciate you.
But life happens, folks. Okay, so, let's make a motion, I mean, can somebody make a motion to accept the financial report?
I motion.
Oh, second. Okay, motion made and seconded, motion made by Dell Collard, seconded by Tim Ryan's to accept the financial report. And we'll do a roll call. Dave?
Hi.
Mr. Woods, Mr. Ryan.
Hi.
Dell.
Hi.
I to Stuart, Mr. Rosa. I'm staying from the, you're saying, one extension. Dave and myself, I'll vote. Okay, any other public input out there? We have, who's left out there?
Uh, we got Al Feltaneh and Stacy.
Stacy Alice. Is there anybody, any public input out there? And we have one of the highest rated shows in cable, I think. Only because of the entertainment value, it's nothing personal. I wanna thank our members for being so, the, what's that, decorum? Tall or tall, 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 yeah, any skills with this guy?
Mr. Chairman, very well, to see the minutes, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the meeting minutes of the December
Was that the one that had the correction in it?
Where the corrections, yes.
With the correction.
With the corrections.
Next, Tim.
Um, and that was February twenty-seventh.
Yes, yeah, mine was, I don't know.
February, February seventeenth.
Yeah, it's February seventeen.
Oh, yeah, I'm saying fantasy day, aren't you, Eric?
Yeah, I already said it was Portuguese.
So I'd like to make a motion that we approve the meeting minutes.
You would say that to me.
Is that the one we gave you?
Tim, go ahead, I
I'd like to make a motion for approval of meeting minutes of February seventeenth, twenty twenty-two, prepared by our administrators.
Motion on the floor to approve the minutes from the last meeting.
I'll second that.
All right, cut it short. Seconded by
With amendments, excuse me, with
With amendments to Mr. Digit's vote, and then seconded by Dell Collard, anything else, Tim? That's it, right? Okay, let's take a roll call on that. Mr.?
Hi.
Mr. Woods. Mr. Ryan.
Hi.
Mrs. Collard, Mr. Pro, Mr. Rosa.
Hi.
Mr. Eris.
Hi.
And myself. It's unanimous, it is. All right, so we got through that. Any other, anything else anybody wants to say? We have the, we have the meeting scheduled, public input's been covered. Now, if there's any, what, what did we do?
We rest the public input, we're not finished. I'd like to take a few calls.
I was just gonna say, if anybody has something else, that's always in that.
So we're still in the public?
We're still in. If somebody wants to We're still in, if somebody wants to make statements or anything, we'll apply.
Alright, so, um, we're seeing what's transpired, so what our next move is that we have to, uh, write warrant articles for the grade categories, the ten, ten submissions, as well as the administrative budget, that warrant article has to be written. The administrative budget, the five thousand dollars or five percent, uh, that only information just needs to go just to the town accountant, and she gets that, um. So, um, last year, we're gonna have to look at the receipts, um, with Mr. Erickson to see what was received by the town, about the control number out there. It was a hundred thousand dollars and you use them ten percent, which is ten thousand dollars each, the three categories of ten, you have seventy thousand dollars left over, minus the five thousand dollar administrative budget. That would make it to be sixty-five thousand balls in the, on days of need or reserve, they would automatically go there. If the committee decides that they wanna pump up those numbers, because sometimes after, um, tax receipts come in from the state, those numbers have to be readjusted, and you have to do that sometimes at the special time, so my suggestion is that, let's look to see what we received last year, it's under the committee, you can put more than ten percent onto the historical category, the office space.
Can I say something? Um, also, I wanna intercheck, we did get an extra thirty percent at the end there, so there is a lot of money flowing in there. And you are correct, cause I was, I was under the impression it stayed the same, cause sometimes it doesn't change, but this year it did change exponentially.
It changed drastically because the receipts are up for the registry of deeds in regards to that, but, um, that too, the point being is that um, the committee can decide to say again to put in more than ten percent in these three of those categories, um, the administrative budget is seventy-five percent, you could, you could put ten percent in. If you don't expend those monies, you're just, you know, wasting putting that into.
Yeah.
Ten percent. The, so that would be the one article that has to be written warrant article for submission again, so we're gonna have to have that ready and prepared to vote on it for next month at the meeting, so. Um, the chairman's one of the great points, that is that, um, the community preservation committee, we pay dues annually to the community, um, community preservation coalition. And what's happened is that the, uh, configuration of how the dues are, um, sent out to member communities is that it all depends on how much money is being sent to the management. Once we were falling below the hundred thousand dollar, our dues were only three hundred and fifty dollars a gift, so now since we're over, I mean, the trigger went one hundred and twenty-five thousand with the eight hundred and fifty dollars. So I think we're gonna have to reach out to the coalition to see if we're gonna have a dues increase, um, they should be sent to that paperwork out to us anyway, or, you know, their bill, whatever may be, there may be, so, um, we should get that, that's something we should look into.
Excellent.
You're following.
Is this, you know, uh? Oh, I have a question.
Yeah, we, we.
Financial, uh, question.
Yes.
The, uh.
I'm sorry, excuse me, sir, I think you said something that was kind of maybe.
What did I say?
People, no, no, this gentleman here just said something, he knew about the eight fifty incident, it's already been paid, is that what you meant to say, sir?
Yes.
Okay, so the previous, all the previous discussion before was of, did a great deal of value.
No, no, not really.
Oh, thanks.
No, it is valuable, Mr. Rosa, because, are you on that, uh?
Dave, let me ask you a question before.
Wait a minute, Tim, I didn't think you were gonna, Tim, I didn't think you were gonna do it, I got it, sorry, sir, let me ask you something. Hey, Mr. Jackson, let's go, let's go, let's go, let's go, let's go. And you, you, you are nothing, you are nothing, Tim, you were standing on the shit, you seen him, you're done, you're done, you wanna go? You wanna step outside, he knows how to step outside, you wanna step outside, he knows how to step outside, do you wanna step outside? Do you wanna step outside? You're doing that before, hey, you wanna step outside, do you wanna step outside? You wanna step outside? Let's go, let's go, let's go, let's go, let's go. Fucking do it, go ahead, Tim, go ahead, let's go.
No.
Okay.
No, I'm good this time, I'm like.
Yeah. I thought he was going to.
Yeah, I'm sure at least for the.
But you know how to push his buttons, too.
Yeah.
Well, he's standing up there yelling.
We're still live, by the way.
Alright, alright, we're still live, let's get back in order, somebody wanna check on him, make sure he's alright?
You don't have to do that to try to aggravate.
You didn't have to stand up and yell at me. Alright, but he, he was holding.
This is the last meeting anyway.
He was holding his arm and anything, let's just try to get the finish.
No, he was making a.
So we need to call the police.
And he didn't need.
Harrison, we need the police.
You think you're clever?
Alright. Nothing clever about it. Somebody called the police. Standing there yelling at me, why?
You are no good.
Yeah, that's what you want. You wanna call them, I'll call them, is you gonna be alright, everybody's alright here? He's checking on him, I, he was holding pretty well, but, you know, I can understand.
He didn't need, Tim did not need to be insulted.
Tim didn't need to stand up and say anything? Alright, let's, let's move on.
He was talking about.
He was doing good, and then it happened.
He was discussing future.
But like I say, this is the highest, this is worse than that show with that guy from Cincinnati, alright, so, uh, let's, uh.
Okay.
Let's make a move to do adjournment, hell was we? Go ahead.
I think, I think we're good.
I think we're done.
I don't know if we adjourn.
Motion made to adjourn second by our, uh, toastmaster general, thank God for you. I'm gonna have to go to confection now.
Okay.
So, uh, it's on the floor, let's adjourn, let's take a vote, Mr. Woods?
Aye.
Mr. Marvell, how do you vote for adjournment?
I'll vote for it.
Aye.
Yes.
Uh, aye. Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Brewer?
Aye.
Dave, everybody, I'm for a unanimous adjournment at what time?
I got you, seven twenty-seven, seven twenty-seven.
Okay, so we're officially adjourned?
Yes.
Okay, I'm gonna end this thing. Hold on, guys.